Bueno, quiero empezar esta noche hablando un poco sobre COVID-19. ¿Es el final? Sé que cuando ocurrió fue un poco aterrador, ya que ahora estamos acostumbrados a ello. Y solo diré que nadie sabe cuándo es el final. Sabes, había mucha gente en Facebook o otras redes sociales diciendo: "Este es el final, listo, viene". Y es como, no sabemos si es el final o no. Hay otra pregunta que la gente pregunta, dicen: "¿Fue este juicio de Dios?" ¿Fue Dios juzgando al mundo? Y creo que realmente no podemos decir sí o no, fue el juicio de Dios. Pero voy a decir esto, Dios muchas veces usa la adversidad para atraer a la gente a Él mismo. Él usa la adversidad para atraer a la gente a Él mismo. Es como cuando las alturas llegan, y ves este patrón en el Antiguo Testamento una y otra vez. Israel, estaban siguiendo a Dios, las cosas estaban bien. Cuando estaba bien, ¿qué hicieron? Bien, vamos a empezar a hacer lo que queremos hacer. Comenzaron rebelde y orando. Y Dios envió profetas, no reunían su acto. Así que Dios envió persecución, Dios envió hambre, Dios envió sequía. Envía tiempos difíciles. Y esa adversidad los llevó de vuelta a Dios, repetieron y vino a Él. Así que Dios usa la adversidad para atraer a la gente a Él mismo. Cuando el COVID-19 comenzó a salir, creo que fue la semana antes de que cerramos las oficinas. Y alguien me preguntó, dijo: "Craig, ¿sabes qué dice el 2º Cráncico 7:13?" Y yo digo: "No, sé el 7:14", y lo coordiné. "Si mis personas, que son llamadas por mi nombre, humildan a sí mismas, rezan y señalan con mi cara, y corren por los malos caminos, te diré el pecado, escuche el infierno, perdona la tierra..." Todo ese buen truco. Tengo que buscar el 7:13, y cuando lo hice fue muy interesante. Dice: "Cuando cierro el cielo y no hay lluvia, o ordeno al loco devorar la tierra, o enviar plaguas entre mis personas. Si mis personas, que son llamadas por mi nombre, humildan a sí mismas, rezan, señalan con mi cara, corren por sus malos caminos, escuche el infierno, perdona el pecado y cura su tierra." Y nunca me di cuenta que en el contexto de ese versículo, que muchos de nosotros conocemos tan bien, y probablemente puedan citarlo, no me di cuenta de que ese sentimiento salió de plaguas, de locos, de no tener lluvia, de sequía. Y de nuevo, no estoy diciendo que fue una cuestión del juicio de Dios, porque he visto a Dios hacer algunas cosas increíbles, sorprendentes a través de esto. Por ejemplo, las iglesias salieron online. De repente, prácticamente todas las iglesias de América comenzaron una oficina online. Sé que hicimos, estábamos, ya sabes, juntándolo, haciendo de inmediato. Hey, yo sé mucho más sobre las redes y ir a Facebook Live que nunca he hecho antes. Pero mientras las iglesias salieron online, alcanzamos muchas más gente que solo por tener servicios físicos. Y entonces muchas de esas iglesias ahora continúan ese ministerio. Y así estamos alcanzando más gente a través de esto. También muchas personas comenzaron a buscar a Dios. Y algunas personas han comenzado a volver a la iglesia, hace mucho tiempo que no han estado en la iglesia. Y así veo cómo Dios ha funcionado todas las cosas juntas para el bien. Y para nosotros, siento que somos más fuertes ahora que antes del COVID-19. Estamos haciendo más ahora que antes del COVID-19. Así que, ya sabes, si fue el juicio de Dios, hubo una bendición que salió del juicio. Así que no creo que podamos decir: "Era el juicio de Dios, tenemos que hacerlo bien". Tenemos que hacerlo bien, pero realmente no podemos decir si es su juicio o no. Mi amada asistencia me está ayudando con algo que no estoy seguro de qué. Bien, la siguiente cosa, quiero hablar sobre este COVID-19, porque creo que realmente revela cuán rápido nos podemos quitar la libertad y cómo podemos mudarnos a un gobierno global. Fue increíble solo ver qué pasó en América y en todo el mundo. Y cuando lo piensas, nuestro personal, y estamos hablando, y el pastor Daniel nos hizo esto. Preguntó una pregunta: "¿Cuándo es la última vez que todo el mundo estaba unido y haciendo la misma cosa? ¿Qué piensas?"
Bueno, me había olvidado, pero cuando teníamos esa canción, "Somos el mundo, somos la gente".
Bien.
¿Recuerdas eso?
Sí, "Somos el mundo, somos la gente", bien. Bien.
La Torre de Babel.
Torre de Babel. Todos hicieron la Torre de Babel. Sabes, en Genesis 11:1 y 4 dice: "La tierra entera hablaba un solo idioma y una sola lengua, y dijeron: "Vamos a construirnos una ciudad en una torre que alcance el顶部 de los cielos. Que hagamos un nombre para nosotros mismos, que estemos dispersos en toda la superficie de la tierra". Y Dios vio su hubris, su orgullo, y dijo: "Hombre, pueden hacer cualquier cosa". Así que Dios la cerró. Y es interesante cómo este momento ahora, creo que estamos acercando el final más cerca de lo que nunca antes, pero todos estaban unidos al hacer una cosa. Y mientras miramos un gobierno global, fue interesante que el ex ministro primario británico, Gordon Brown, le pidió a los líderes mundiales crear una forma temporal de gobierno global para lidiar con la crisis de la enfermedad médica y económica causada por el COVID-19. Dijo: "Esto no es algo que se puede lidiar en un país. Tiene que haber una respuesta global coordinada". Y solo piensa en ello, si hubiera una crisis global de algún tipo, ¿cuán rápido las cosas podrían moverse hacia un gobierno global? Creo que estamos más cerca del final de lo que nunca hemos sido antes. Creo que estamos más cerca del final. Y creo que una razón es que la tecnología existe para el signo de la bestia. En Revelación 13:17 y 18 dice: "Nadie compra o vende excepto como el signo o el nombre de la bestia y el número de su nombre". El número es 666. Y recuerdo, me salvé en los años setenta. Era un niño, y los películas de El Hombre y la Vida estaban en marcha. No sé si alguno de ustedes recuerda esas. No de gran calidad. Sabes, "No hay tiempo para cambiar tu mente, el sol está llegando, has sido dejado atrás". Estaban como, "Te perdiste la nación", sabes. Era como, "Necesitabas el signo de la bestia para comprar o vender". Y recuerdo pensando, "¿Cómo ha funcionado eso?" Sabes, solo tomas un marca mágico y pones 666 en la mano o en la espalda. Y luego, ¿cómo funciona eso? Y luego le das tu dinero. Pero hoy en día, ya sabes, con el microchip, y hay incluso conversación, cómo, ya sabes, Bill Gates quiere microchipar a todos. Todos necesitan la vacuna, y cuando la obtienes, eres microchipped, y así es como identificamos que has sido vacunado. Hay una empresa, una empresa de tecnología, creo que está en California, pero ellos, hace unos meses, en el año pasado, se deshizo de todas las llaves o tarjetas clave, y dijeron: "Si quieres trabajar en nuestra planta, necesitas obtener microchips". Y así todos sus empleados tienen que ser microchippedos si quieren trabajar en esta planta. Así es como entran en el edificio, así es como se identifican, así es como ejecutan todas las diferentes empresas y negocios. Y tienes que ser microchipped. Y estamos viviendo en un momento en el que la tecnología existe para implementar el signo de la bestia donde no puedes comprar o vender sin él. En lugar de tomar ese chipo que está en tu débito o tarjeta de crédito, simplemente lo implantes bajo tu piel, bajo tu mano o en la espalda, y así es como lo hacemos. Así que creo que estamos muy cerca del final en light of that. Otra razón por la que estamos cerca del final es que la tecnología existe para revelar conversaciones secretas. En Luke 12:3 dice: "Lo que dices en la oscuridad será oído en el día. Lo que silba en la oreja y en las habitaciones será reclamado desde los pisos". Ahora, creo que una forma en que esta profecía pueda cumplirse es que cuando estás hablando, hay espíritus demonios. Escuchan lo que dices, y luego lo toman y lo dicen a alguien más. Sé que cuando era joven, mi pastor me contó de un momento, él y su esposa estaban hablando de una conversación. Nadie más estaba alrededor, y alguien venía y les contaba de su conversación. Esa es la única cosa que podrían pensar, a menos que alguien rompiere el paraje, lo cual, ya sabes, tal vez fuera una posibilidad. Pero hoy en día, con nuestros teléfonos, con nuestros dispositivos de audición, con todos, ya sabes, con nuestros televisores inteligentes, con todas las cosas diferentes, esos dispositivos con cámaras y micrófonos, ¿pueden encenderse y la gente escuchar lo que están haciendo en su hogar y todas esas conversaciones? Hace unos años, no mucho antes, había una televisión en CBS llamada Person of Interest. No sé si alguno de ustedes vio, yo me involucré en ella. Y lo que era sobre fue, había este tipo que hizo esta red que básicamente cada teléfono celular, cada cámara de seguridad en cada, ya sabes, banco, calle, luz de calle, fue básicamente todo traído a un sistema que fue usado para detener el terrorismo. Y luego este tipo, se dio cuenta de que números irrelevantes, personas que no importaban, sus vidas estaban amenazadas, estaban siendo sacados del sistema para detener el terrorismo. Así que él estableció un equipo para ayudar a esas personas que necesitaban ayuda. Que era como, cada cámara, cada smartphone, todo en el mundo fue usado para monitorear y atrapar a la gente. Y tenemos la tecnología hoy en día para hacer eso. Así que creo que estamos viviendo más cerca del final de lo que nunca hemos sido antes. Ahora, mientras vamos a este estudio, solo quiero que te den cuenta de que hay múltiples puntos de vista sobre los tiempos finales. Múltiples puntos de vista sobre la profecía. Hay probablemente cientos de formas en que la gente interpreta diferentes escrituras. Y dos personas pueden ver la misma escritura y obtener algo totalmente diferente. Y en las semanas que vienen, voy a enseñarte algunos ejemplos de cómo eso sucede. No hay un modo absoluto de saber cuáles son correctos. No hay manera de hacer eso. Así que no se sienta como si tuvieras que tener, ya sabes, tienes que tener todas las respuestas. Y tienes que saber todas las respuestas y ser experto en ello, porque literalmente, mientras estudio para mi clase que enseño en la escuela de ministerio de Wyoming, mientras estuve estudiando para esta clase, probablemente he puesto en más de 200 horas de estudio. Y todavía estoy estudiando. Y puedo decirte que casi cuanto más estudio, más confundido me vuelvo. Cuanto más respuestas da, más preguntas produce. Los tiempos finales son tan complejos, es un tema profundo, que no hay manera de excluir todos los recursos, todos los materiales de estudio que están ahí. Ahora, esta noche, mientras empezamos, lo que pensé que sería bueno hacer es solo dar algunas definiciones de términos de tiempo final. Dar algunas definiciones, de esa manera, estamos todos en el mismo plano, que todos tenemos una comprensión de lo que está pasando, de lo que estamos hablando cuando traemos estos términos. Así que el primer término que quiero hablar sobre esta noche es el término "nación". "Nación". Y esto está en 1 Thessaloníos, capítulo 4, versos 16 a 17. Dice: "Porque Él mismo descendirá de los cielos con un grito, con la voz de un arcoángel y con el trompeteo de Dios, y los muertos en Cristo se levantarán primero. Entonces nosotros que estamos vivos y permanecemos seremos atrapados juntos con ellos en las nubes para reunirnos con el Señor en el aire, y por lo tanto siempre estaremos con el Señor". Así que esa es la escritura en la que basamos la doctrina de la nación. Y si estamos definiendo la nación, sería cuando Jesús aparece en las nubes y reúne a todos los cristianos, tanto cristianos muertos como cristianos vivos, y luego los lleva a los cielos. Solo quiero señalar aquí que Jesús no toca físicamente la tierra, viene en las nubes. Mientras volvemos y vemos aquí, Él los atrapa con ellos en las nubes, Él no toca la tierra. En este punto, cuerpos de cristianos muertos, cristianos que han muerto, sus cuerpos se reunirán con sus almas, que han estado con Jesús todo el tiempo. Nos dicen en 2 Corintios, capítulo 5, verso 8, que ser ausente de nuestro cuerpo es estar presente con el Señor. Así que nuestra alma va a los cielos, estamos inmediatamente en la presencia de Cristo, pero nuestro cuerpo está enterrado. Así que en la nación, esas personas que vienen con Jesús, su alma se reunirá con su cuerpo. Y luego nosotros que estamos vivos y permanecemos, vamos a estar atrapados en los cielos con ellos. Ahora, mientras leemos esto, parece que el recto del Antiguo Testamento, los santos del Antiguo Testamento no están resucitados aquí. No parece que estén resucitados aquí. Solo la iglesia, porque dice "los muertos en Cristo", los que han recibido a Cristo. Abraham, David, todos ellos, estaban antes de Cristo. Así que no parece que sus cuerpos, sus almas estén en los cielos con Jesús, que sus cuerpos no sean resucitados hasta más tarde. Y veremos eso más tarde mientras pasamos por esto. Así que la siguiente cosa que debes darnos es que el término "nación" no aparece en la Biblia. Si buscas el término, si vas a Bible Gateway.com y te das a "nación", no lo encontrarás. Si vas a Strongest Concordance y buscas el término "nación", no encontrarás el término "nación". Y el concepto es enseñado, sin embargo, que el término "nación" proviene del latín "rapto", que significa "escupir o agarrar". Y ahí es donde obtenemos el nombre "raptor" de ellos. Piensa en un pájaro de prejuicio, se llaman pájaros "raptor", ya sabes, pájaros, aves, palcos, vuelan, vienen y cuelgan ese pescado de la lagoña, o sacan ese perro, ya sabes, del suelo. Realmente desearía que tuviéramos un montón de ellos que vengan aquí y escupen los pájaros de la selva que están fuera de nuestras, ya sabes, nuestras áreas de campo alrededor de la iglesia. Pero vienen y los escupen, y eso es lo que va a pasar cuando Jesús viene. Nosotros que estamos vivos y permanecemos seremos escupidos, atrapados juntos con ellos en las nubes para reunirnos en el aire. Y no es para nosotros ser comidos por un gran ave, ¿vale? Estamos yendo al barrio de la tierra, donde podemos comer, ya sabes, tarta, pollo, carne, trigo y lo que sea que tengan allí. Así que no es algo malo ser escupido como un pájaro de prejuicio, es bueno. Pero solo para darnos cuenta de que el término "nación" no está en la Biblia misma. Ahora, hay mucho debate sobre el momento de la nación. ¿Cuándo sucede el término "nación"? Y hay tres términos que la gente usa: "pre trib", "med trib" y "post trib". Y así lo que eso significa es que, si crees en un "pre trib", tribio significando tribulación, crees que la nación viene antes o antes de que la tribulación suceda. Si crees en un "med trib" nación, entonces crees que la nación viene en el medio de la tribulación. Y para aquellos que creen en un "post trib" nación, creen que viene después de la tribulación. Esas son las tres puntos de vista de la nación, las tres puntos básicos. Algunas personas tienen una teoría de múltiples naciones. Que, ya sabes, va a haber muchas naciones. Alguien dice, "Craig, ¿estás pre trib, med trib o post trib?" ¿Bien? "Soy pan trib". ¿Sabes qué es eso? "Todo va a panar en el final". En serio, soy pre trib, creo que viene antes. Pero también, cuando estudio, puedo tomar las escrituras donde parece medio y donde parece post. Y no podemos decir, y cuando terminemos esta noche, voy a darle una observación final sobre eso. Solo sé que necesitamos estar listos en todas las ocasiones, porque, hey, podrías ir aquí y pasar por un accidente de auto. Y no es la nación, pero es tu momento de ir, así que siempre necesitamos estar listos. No podemos esperar, así que tengo tiempo, tengo tiempo. No sabemos cuánto tiempo tenemos. Así que esa es la definición de la nación. El segundo término que vamos a ver esta noche es "tribulación". Y "tribulación" se refiere a un periodo de tiempo cuando Dios expone su raíz sobre la tierra. Dios va a exponer su raíz sobre la tierra, y es durante este tiempo que el Anticristo viene a la escena. El Anticristo, se define al individuo que proclamará que es el Mesías judío en lugar de Jesús. Él dice: "Jesús no es el Mesías, yo soy el Mesías". Él se convertirá en el gobernador del gobierno global. Él será poseído por el pecador mismo, por Lucifer, por Satanás. Y él exigirá la adoración como si fuera Dios. Así que ese es el Anticristo. Veremos más profundamente al Anticristo en las próximas semanas en nuestro estudio. Solo quiero pausar aquí, porque hemos cubierto bastante mejor el tema. ¿Alguien tiene alguna pregunta? Por cierto, mientras hablo de algo, si tienes una pregunta, solo levanta la mano. Trataré de responderla allí, si voy a responderla más tarde, simplemente pausaremos. ¿Alguien tiene alguna pregunta hasta ahora? Quiero que leas preguntas. No soy el sabio que expone información, ¿vale? Así que déjese de preguntar. No vemos manos, continuaremos. El próximo término que vamos a identificar esta noche es "el segundo venir", "el segundo venir de Cristo". Y esto es cuando Jesús vuelve físicamente a la tierra y lucha contra el Anticristo y las armas del mundo que siguen al Anticristo. Así que Jesús vuelve físicamente y pone pie en el planeta una segunda vez. La primera vez que llegó como bebé y el maestro, viene de nuevo como rey conquistador. El próximo término es "los últimos días". Muchas veces la gente dice: "¿Estamos viviendo en los últimos días?" Y la respuesta es sí, porque "los últimos días" se define como el periodo de tiempo desde el libro de Actes hasta ahora y en el futuro. Cuando miras Actes 2, versos 16 y 17. Y este es el día de la Pentecostal. "El Espíritu Santo se expuso sobre toda la carne, y hablaron otras lenguas y fueron renovados con poder". Dice: "Esto fue lo que dijo el profeta Joel. "Vendrá en los últimos días que exponré mi Espíritu sobre toda la carne". Así que él dice lo que Joel dijo entonces cuando Dios expone su Espíritu. Esto, lo que pasó en la Pentecostal, esto es. Así que eso significa que estamos viviendo en los últimos días. "Tus hijos y hijas profecionarán, tus jóvenes verán visiones, tus viejos sueñarán sueños". Así que estamos viviendo en los últimos días. Ya sabes, puedes pensar, ¿qué ha pasado durante 2000 años, por llorar, ¿cuánto tiempo? Ya sabes, el día es como los 1000 años del Señor, así que supongo que han sido dos días, así que... De todos modos, los últimos días. La siguiente definición que vamos a ver es "el milenio". Dile "milenio" muy rápido. Dile cinco veces, "milenio, milenio, milenio, milenio". El término "milenio" en realidad, "mil" significa "milésimo", y "enio" en el idioma original, que proviene de "años". Literalmente significa "mil años", eso es lo que significa el término. Y así es un periodo de 1000 años cuando Satanás está bajo y Jesús reina como rey de la tierra. Lees sobre esto en Revelación. Y durante este tiempo, Jesús alza la paz mundial, y Dios cumple sus profecías con Israel para ser una fuerza internacional. Y vamos a hablar un poco más sobre el milenio esta noche en un momento más tarde. La siguiente definición, cuando la gente dice "los tiempos finales", lo que escribe por el "tiempo final" es que eso comprende la nación, la tribulación, el segundo venir, el milenio y el momento de todos estos eventos diferentes. Así que el tiempo final es como la pelota de la pelota de actes, la pelota de la colina. Eso es lo que se refiere cuando hablamos de los tiempos finales. Estoy tratando de ir lentamente para que puedas escribir esto, si quieres escribirlo, hazlo. La siguiente definición es "el día del Señor". Ahora, este es uno realmente interesante. "El día del Señor" se refiere a un periodo de tiempo cuando Dios envía el juicio a la gente. No es un día literal, no es un periodo de 24 horas, como, ¡boom!, son 24 horas y terminado. Es un periodo de tiempo, y es cuando Dios envía el juicio. Y hay tres aspectos diferentes del día del Señor. Hay el día inmediato, el día inminente del Señor y el día último del Señor. Si no lo has escrito, está bien, porque voy a dividirlo aquí y solo dar algunos ejemplos en los siguientes minutos. Un buen ejemplo del día inmediato del Señor está en Joel 1, versos 1 a 12. Y cuando decimos inmediato, significa como Dios juzgó a su gente por su pecado. O Dios juzgó a un grupo de personas, no solo a Israel, a veces fue en naciones. Y así Dios juzga a la gente por su pecado, y ese juicio viene, y una profecía es dada, y ese juicio sucede de inmediato. Y esto es lo que pasó en Joel, capítulo 1. Ahora, esto puede ser un poco pequeño, espero que puedas ver la pantalla más grande bien. Pero, ¿cómo recuerdas ese tipo de Joel que dice: "Cuando era tu edad, yo caminaba a la escuela, de subo, ambas partes, en el nieve, sin zapatos". ¿Sabes? Michael, ¿fue tú? ¡Dos veces! Todavía quiero saber cómo funcionó "ambas partes". Así que vamos a hablar después de esta noche, ¿vale? Veremos eso. Pero de una manera, esto es lo que Joel está diciendo, la profecía, porque él dice: "¿Algo como esto ha pasado en tus días, en los días de tus padres? Hey, dime a tus hijos sobre esto, y que ellos le digan a sus hijos, y luego ellos le dicen a sus hijos". Y, ya sabes, esto es como nada que haya pasado antes. Estoy parafrazando aquí. Y él dice: "Lo que el loco que bebe le dejó", Dios envió la plaga de locos, y atacaron. Había cuatro plaguas consecutivas. Y él dice: "Lo que el loco que bebe le dejó", el loco que se extinguió. Y lo que el loco que se extinguió le dejó, el loco que lloraba. Y en la siguiente temporada, lo que el loco que lloraba le dejó, el loco que se consumía le dejó. Quiero decir, fueron eliminados. Y cuando lees versos 9 a 12, dice: "El grano y la oferta de bebida han sido cortados de la casa del Señor". ¿Por qué es eso? Porque toda la harina, toda la barra, todo el grano que se llevó, todos los granos que estaban creciendo en las tinias se desdecimaron. No había grano, no había grano, no había nada. Y él dice: "Los pecadores aún más. "El campo está vaciado, la tierra está dourada, el grano está arruinado, la aceite se ha secado". Él dice: "Sejáis, agricultores, vales, encubiertos de hierba, para la harina y la barra, porque la cosecha ha perdido. "La hierba se ha secado, el árbol de figo está hundido, el árbol de pomegranate, el palo, el arbol de manzana. "Todos los árboles, el campo está hundido porque los animales vinieron, y los quitasteis, herederos. "Seguramente la alegría se ha hundido de la parte de los hijos de Maná". Joel está hablando de un juicio inmediato de Dios que llegó a Israel por su pecado. Así que este es un ejemplo del día inmediato del Señor, del juicio inmediato. Luego, cuando empiezas el versículo 13 de Joel y vas a 2:27, vemos el día inminente del Señor. Hubo otro día que venía pronto y necesitaban estar listos para eso. Y empieza diciendo en el versículo 13: "Pon una capa de acero, pecadores, y más, vales, declaren un fastidio sagrado y una asamblea sagrada". Dios los llama a la repetencia. "Corren por tu pecado, ven a mí y ve si yo no te curaré". Él dice: "La invasión de Asiria es inminente". En 2:1 a 2, dice: "Lleva el trompeteo de Zion, son los alarmes en mi monte santo". Pensé, no sé si alguno de ustedes cantó esa canción en los años setenta y ochenta. "Lleva el trompeteo de Zion, Zion". Son los alarmes. ¿En serio de qué se trata eso? Es un llamado a la repetencia y al fastidio, pero cantamos como un sonido de victoria, ¡oh, sí! Totalmente lo tomé fuera de contexto. Y él dice: "Hombre, son los alarmes, hay una armada que viene a invadir. "Que todos los que viven en la tierra se acerquen, porque el día del Señor viene. "Está cerca, es un día de oscuridad y flores, como el sol surgiendo sobre las montañas, viene una gran y poderosa armada". Asiria iba a invadir a Israel y Judá, y él dice: "Necesitas rezar, necesitas arrepentirte". Si realmente te arrepientes, 2:13 dice: "Dios te restará, tu grano, tu aceite, todo el árbol". Y habla de eso en versos 14 y 24, y en el versículo 25, dice: "Dios reemplazará lo que los locos han matado, Dios te restará". Así que hubo este tiempo inminente de juicio que venía. Y luego, cuando vas a Joel 2:28, vemos un ejemplo del día último del Señor. Y ahí es donde entramos en los eventos de tiempo final. Cuando Jesús viene de vuelta y va a juzgar la tierra, expone su raíz sobre la tierra y la tribulación, y viene a la tierra en el segundo venir, todas esas cosas. Y dice, el versículo 28, ve si esto suena familiar. Y después, ¿cuál es el afterword? Después del día inminente del Señor, de lo que acabamos de hablar, la nación asiriana viene a invadirte. "Exponré mi Espíritu sobre todos los hombres. "Tus hijos y hijas profecionarán". ¿Suena familiar? Acabamos de leer eso en Actes, capítulo 6, y sigue diciendo eso. Y luego en el versículo 30, después de lo que pasó el día de la Pentecostal, dice: "Mostraré milagros en los cielos y en la tierra, sangre y fuego y pilas de humo. "El sol se convertirá en oscuridad, y la luna en sangre, antes del venir del gran y temeroso día del Señor". Así que aquí vemos un día futuro del Señor que viene. No ha pasado, no fue parte del Antiguo Testamento, pero viene. Y dice, en el versículo 32, "Cualquiera que llame el nombre del Señor será salvado", saltando del capítulo 3, versículo 1. "Miren esos días y en ese momento, cuando traiga a los captivos de Judá y Jerusalén, "También reuniré a todas las naciones y los traeré al valle de Jehazapat. "Y entraré en el juicio con ellos allí, en cuenta de mi gente, mi herencia, Israel, "De los que han sido dispersos entre las naciones, que han dividido mi tierra". El Anticristo va a atacar a la nación judía, van a estar dispersos. Dios va a traer a los judíos de vuelta, va a juzgar al mundo en el día último del Señor. ¿Alguna pregunta hasta ahora sobre el día del Señor o algo más de lo que hemos hablado? ¿Bien? Solo un poco más. Cuando miras el día del Señor, otra referencia, y esta es una referencia importante que realmente podemos ver, es Zechariah 14:1 a 20, que habla de que toda la tierra esté incluida en el juicio del día del Señor. Así que ese es el día último. Pero también vemos profecías que pasaron en el Antiguo Testamento, donde Babylon iba a experimentar un día del Señor, un momento del juicio de Dios en Isaías 13. Edom tuvo su día del Señor en Isaías 34. Muchas naciones gentiles, Egipto, Libia, Lidia y Chub. No sé más de Chub, creo que ese país se fue. Eso es en Ezequiel 30. Uh, that's in Ezekiel 30. And this is very interesting, because sometimes, in a prophecy, and we were gonna see this in Isaiah 2:2, that as he's talking, he's talking, kind of flips back and forth between the ultimate day and the eminent day that is going to come upon Israel. And, um, so, you can go ahead and read that on your own, but here's the thing about the day of the Lord. Each national calamity was to remind the people that the day of the Lord is coming, and we need to be ready. God judges sin. Turn from your sin, turn to God. And so, when we experience these calamities on earth, they're just to remind us that God judges sin. Before Adam and Eve sinned, there were no calamities. There were no droughts, no pestilences, there was no violence, no war, no death. Death had not entered the human race until Adam and Eve sinned. So all of the horrible atrocities, all of the horrible, uh, natural disasters, the things that we see are a result of sin, and they remind us that we need to repent and turn to God. All right. Any questions about any of the definitions we've talked about before we move on? Christina?
The ultimate day of the Lord, it's not like the end, and time, and day of the Lord, like it could also be ultimate, like our future, like the dawn, right? The ultimate day of the Lord wasn't necessarily like when Jesus comes back.
That is the ultimate day of the Lord, when Jesus comes back, yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Yep, that is the ultimate day of the Lord.
Ultimately, the ultimate.
Yes. Rebecca? Ah, the question for our Facebook listeners is, I forgot the question.
Yeah, it's the ultimate day of the Lord, like the, you know, the ultimate.
Is the ultimate day sometime coming in the future, or is that at the end? When Jesus comes on the earth physically? And the answer is, it's when Jesus comes back on the earth physically, it's not a future date. Okay. It's interesting, because the day of the Lord, it kind of encompasses the tribulation and all of that stuff through there. Again, it's a period of time, not necessarily just one point, one day. Okay, the next thing that we wanna look at is the top, Debbie.
So is that during the milli, the thousand years?
Uh, the question is, is that the day of the Lord during the thousand years? No, the day of the Lord is before the millennium, before the thousand years.
Okay, so, Jesus comes to the earth after the thousand years?
No, no, Jesus comes to earth before the thousand year millennium.
That's what I thought, when you just said that.
The day of the Lord, when he comes and he gives judgment, and he attacks the Antichrist, the nations that went against Israel, that happens before the millennium. So Jesus comes to earth, he does that, and then he rules on the earth during the millennium.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Okay. All right, let's take a look at the two advents of Christ. And the word advent means coming. The word advent means coming, and there were two comings of Jesus. The first advent, or the first coming, was the birth of Jesus, where Jesus comes as the suffering servant. And we read about that in Isaiah. He was wounded for our transgressions, he was bruised for our iniquities. "The punishment, um, of our peace was upon him, and by his stripes we are healed." Jesus came to die for our sins, he was the suffering servant, that's the first coming. The second coming is the return of Jesus, where he comes as the conquering king, and he's going to rule the earth during the millennium, during the thousand year period. And so, as we look at this, the first advent was when Jesus set up a spiritual kingdom. And this is, this is where Israel went wrong. Israel rejected Jesus as Messiah, for the most part, Israel did. The religious leaders of most, most of the nation rejected Jesus as Messiah, because they did not realize he was coming to set up a spiritual kingdom, that he was coming to die for their sins. They were under the oppression of the Romans, and in their concept, the Messiah, and we're gonna look at the Messiah later, as we talk about the anti-Messiah, or the Antichrist, because the word Christ is the Greek word for Messiah. Messiah is the Hebrew word for Messiah, so when you say Antichrist, it means the anti-Messiah. The, the Jews thought Jesus was coming as the Messiah to rule and reign physically. And so, their idea is that he is going to overthrow the Roman government, he's gonna set up Israel as a world power. And if you think about it, here's a guy who can walk on water, he commands the wind and the waves. So if you're gonna fight the Roman army, I mean, wouldn't it be great to have a commander in chief who just, "Hey, let's bring the waves up, because they're bringing their ships in, and they're, you know, they're swamped, and he brings the wind, and they can't fight." And here's a guy who can heal the sick, he even raises the dead. So if anyone dies in the battle, I mean, you would be invincible if your commander in chief was supernatural. And they were looking for Jesus to set up the physical kingdom. But they didn't realize that the Old Testament prophecies were two separate events, that there was a suffering servant in the first coming, and then a conquering king in the second coming. Before Jesus can rule on the earth, he has to rule in our hearts. Otherwise, he's not really ruling, because sin runs rampant. And so, Jesus came the first time, to set up a spiritual kingdom, and the second time, he set up a physical kingdom. And so, as we move into the end times, and what we realize is that the first advent happened 2,000 years ago, the second advent is coming, and the main events of the end times, the rapture, the church, the tribulation, and the return of Jesus, those are kind of filling in up to the return of Jesus. The return of Jesus is the actual second coming, his physical return to earth. And so, that is kind of in a nutshell, those are how things take place. So we need to realize, Jesus is coming back again. I grew up in a mainline denomination, and, you know, it, it, our salvation, the forgiveness of sin was based upon our works. If you go to church, take communion, be baptized, go to confession, you do all these things, then you work your way to heaven. You're a good enough person to get in. And that's kind of an oversimplification, but it was a works-based salvation. And in the church, I've never heard of Jesus coming again. I know Jesus came the first time for sin, but it wasn't until we went to a church that taught about being born again, and it's not by words, it's by grace who can save through faith, not that many of their selves, it's a gift of God, so that no one can boast. It wasn't until we went there that they started talking about the rapture. We're going, "What? The rapture, yeah, Jesus is coming again." It's like, "Yeah, what are you smoking, huh? I've never heard of Jesus coming back again." And I think there's a lot of people that don't realize Jesus is coming again, but he is. And are we ready? So now, here's the question, and this is where you get into the rapture and the return of Christ, when he sets up the kingdom, is how many times, when he comes back, is he coming, is he coming once or twice? And what I mean by that is, let's go here, is the rapture take place almost simultaneously as the return of Christ? That's what we talk about. And for those that believe in a pre-trib rapture, we believe it happens before the tribulation, and then the return of Christ happens at the end, so he's coming back two times. If you're a mid-trib, you believe he's coming back two times, he's coming in the middle and at the end. If you're post-trib, then you would believe that Jesus is returning, and like, the rapture happens, and then we come right back down to earth to return with Jesus, so that he can fight the Antichrist and his armies. And so, as we take a look at these, at, is he coming back once or twice? In the rapture, Jesus comes in the clouds. It says, "The Lord will descend from heaven with a shout, with the trumpet of God, the dead and Christ will rise first, and we who are alive will remain, shall be caught up together with him in the clouds, to meet the Lord in the air again." Jesus does not come to the earth, so he's coming in the clouds, that's the rapture. When we come to Jesus coming on earth to fight the Antichrist, this is when he returns to earth, and it's the second coming. And we really see this in Zechariah, chapter 14. It says, "A day of the Lord is coming, Jerusalem." Notice when it said "a day," because there was many days of the Lord, both immediately and eminently, but there is a day, the ultimate day of the Lord, is coming, Jerusalem. "When your possessions will be plundered and divided up within your very walls, I will gather all the nations to Jerusalem to fight against it." In AD 70, the Roman Empire came and fought against Israel, not all the nations. So this is not talking about what took place in AD 70. And there are some people that would say, "Well, all these prophecies took place in, you know, in Old Testament times or New Testament times." It's, but it says, "I will gather all the nations to Jerusalem to fight against it. The city will be captured, the houses ransacked, and the women raped. Half of the city will go into exile, but the rest of the people will not be taken from the city. Then the Lord will go out and fight against those nations, as he fights on a day of battle. On that day, his feet will stand on the Mount of Olives, east of Jerusalem." So here we see, Jesus physically sets foot on planet earth. "The Mount of Olives be split in two, from the east to the west." Can you imagine, has the mountain be split in two, from east to west? Wow, that's powerful. Rebecca?
Okay, online, someone is asking, so if he is coming back twice, then which time will he put his foot down on the Mount of Olives and in the cloud?
Okay, the question is, and this is from one of our online viewers, that's awesome, thanks for chiming in. The question is, and, uh, correct me if I get it wrong, if he's coming back twice, then which time does he put his feet on the Mount of Olives? Okay, and that would be the second time, it would be the return of Christ, not the rapture. And I guess when I say he's coming back twice, that almost makes it sound like there's two second comings, but what I'm trying, what I want us to realize is that he comes in the clouds, and then he comes on the earth. So he comes in the clouds, and he comes on the earth. And, um, it's this second time, when he returns to earth, that's when he physically sets foot on the earth. The rapture, he takes us up to heaven with the dead and Christ. And then later, and because we believe that a pre-trib rapture, we believe that at the end of the tribulation, that's when Jesus is returning and sets foot on the earth. And we'll get into almost, we're gonna take one session and just deal with, uh, pre- mit or post, which one is it? And so, we'll get into a lot more detail about the rapture in one of our sessions. Okay. Um, but then it says, let's see, "So the Mount of Olives is split from east to west, forming a great valley, with half of the mountain moving north, half moving south, you will flee by my mountain valley, for it will extend to Azil. Then the Lord, my God, will come, and all the holy ones with..." Who are the holy ones that are coming with him? That's us. We are coming back with him, and the good thing, we don't have to fight, you know? Because as we take a look at this in Revelation, Revelation is another description of this. Revelation, chapter 19, verse 11 to 21, and we've kind of skipped some verses, but you can read about it in its entirety in Revelation 19:11 to 21. "Now I saw heaven open, and behold, a white horse, and he who sat on him was all faithful and true, and in righteousness he judges and makes war," verse 14. "And the armies in heaven, clothed in fine linen, white and clean, followed him on white horses." Now, some people would say, "The armies in heaven, those are the angels," but the angels are not described as clothed in fine linen, white and clean. That's a description given to the saints, given to the Christians, to the redeemed. So we are the armies of heaven, and we're going to follow him on white horses, so you get to ride a horse. Hopefully, you're not afraid of him, or you're allergic to him, you know? If you are, I'm sure God's gonna take care of all of that for you, okay? But, um, we're gonna follow him on white horses. "Now out of his mouth goes a sharp sword, that with it he should strike the nations," verse 19. "And I saw the beast," that's the Antichrist, "the kings of the earth and their armies, gathered together to make war against him who sat on the horse," as Jesus and his army, that's us. "Then the beast was captured, and with him the false prophet, who worked signs in his presence, by which he deceived those who received the mark of the beast, and those who worshiped his image. These two, the false prophet and, um, and the beast, are cast alive into the lake of fire, burning with brimstone. The rest were killed with the sword, which proceeded from the mouth of him who sat on the horse, and the birds were filled with their flesh." And he's gonna go on, and we'll look at this more later, Satan at that time, the devil, is thrown into the bottomless pit for a thousand years. We have another question from one of our online viewers. The question is, so when he comes like a thief in the night, is that the time of the rapture? And we would say, yes, that is. And probably any of you, pre- mit or post, would say, yes, that's what that's referring to. So the thief in the night refers to the rapture of the church. All right, any questions about this? I've got a chart here, I just wanna show that, maybe can kind of help, um, maybe clear it up, because I know we've talked about it a lot, and I like pictures. So, um, we have the pre-trib rapture at the top, the mid-trib rapture in the middle, and post-trib in the bottom. The purple square on the far left is the present age, the age that we are living in. And for those who believe in a pre-trib rapture, we're saying that the rapture, where Jesus comes in the clouds, and like a thief in the night, we're caught up with him, takes place before the seven year tribulation. Then, at the end of the second, a seven year tribulation, that's when the second advent, the second coming of Christ takes place, where Jesus sets his foot on the Mount of Olives, and he fights the Antichrist and the armies of the world. And after that, then the thousand year millennium takes place. The mid-trib rapture says that in the present age, sometime, the three and a half year tribulation starts. Then, in the middle of the tribulation, we are raptured, the church is raptured, Jesus comes in the clouds. And then you enter what's called the great tribulation. Now, there is a distinction in the Bible, that the last three and a half years of the tribulation are the great tribulation. There is a really horrible time of God pouring out his wrath and judgment on the earth. And then, at the close of the three and a half years, uh, uh, of the second half, is the second advent and the millennium. The post-trib rapture teaches that, in the present age, the seven year tribulation is going to start. And then, at the end of that, Jesus is going to come in the clouds, we're raptured, and like, immediately after that, we do a U-turn, and we get on our white horses, and we come down with him, and we, he fights against the Antichrist. So the rapture and the second coming, or his return to earth, are simultaneous. They would see it, it happens together, it's just kind of one coming. And so, we believe that there's been two comings of the second coming, the rapture, and then the second coming itself, whereas the post-trib says it takes place one, and then the millennium. Any questions about that? You know it all, you've passed, all right, you're good, we're done, thanks for coming, man. If only it was that easy. All right, I wanna talk now about the millennium, okay? But before I do, I want you to stand, okay? Because you've been sitting for about 55 minutes, and you know what they say, the mind can only receive what the seat can endure, okay? So everybody stand up, just kind of stretch a little bit, you know, if you wanna do some calisthenics. Notice I'm out of view of the camera, so they can't see me right now. But, uh, touch your toes, do that kind of thing, just get loosened up here, we've got about a half hour or so. And honestly, I don't know, I mean, our youth getting done at about 7:00 or about 8:15, so we'll get done around that time. And as I'm preparing these classes, it's like, I know there's a good place to break, and so if we get done in an hour, we're done. Uh, if we go an hour and a half, and if we, I will not go past an hour and a half, I can do it. If we go an hour and a half, and if we, I will not go past an hour and a half, I can guarantee that. So we'll just pick it up next time. All right, are you good, you stretched out? All right, go ahead, grab your seats. I hope you're learning something. Hope you're learning something. All right, so let's talk about the millennium. The millennium is this thousand-year period when Jesus rules on the earth. And there's three views about the millennium. Remember there was, what were the names of the three views of the rapture?
Pre, mid, and post.
Okay, pre, mid, and post. Now, it's not pre, mid, and post-millennium, okay? One of them, two of them are right, but the first one to look at is the pre-millennial view, okay? And this teaches that Jesus actually returns, and that he rules on the earth for a thousand years. He's going to be crowned king, and the world will be under his leadership. So that, and the reason for that is that it kind of talks about when does Jesus return? He returns pre, before the millennium, okay? That's why it's called the pre-millennial view, because Jesus has returned, fought the Antichrist, and then he starts to rule. That's what we believe in as a church, the pre-millennial view. The second view is the post-millennial view. And this view says the millennium is not a thousand years, okay? It's not an actual thousand years. It's an era where Christ reigns, not from a literal earthly throne, but through the gradual increase of the gospel and its power to change lives. And what this teaches is that as the church evangelizes the world, and we live in the world of Christ, we're going to Christianize the world gradually. The world will become, you know, more and more godly, more and more Christian. And after the gradual Christianization of the world by us, the church, then Jesus returns, and he takes us to our eternal state. And so, the millennium, we're living in it right now. Now, does it really feel like Jesus is reigning supreme?
No.
Not really. But they have reasons for their views, and that's why they believe that. And that's why it's called post-millennialism, because the millennium's happening right now as we, the church, are Christianizing the world. This is the reign, this is what's taking place. And because of that, when we've done our job, then Jesus comes, he returns after the millennium and takes us up to heaven. Okay, another question from one of our online viewers.
This is from a child.
This is from a child, okay?
He would like to know how you know when the rapture begins.
How do you know when the rapture begins? That depends on which end you're on. If you're a Christian, you'll all of a sudden, woo, be in the air, and oh man, wow, I'm flying, you know? I don't know exactly what it's like, but if you're a Christian, you'll just be gone for the earth. For those who are left behind, there is going to be a, Christians all over the world, and if you think this, born-again Christians in every country will just be gone. And so, in some families, where maybe the husband is saved and the wife is not, the husband is taken and the wife is left behind. Or maybe the wife and the kids are saved and the husband is not. Or, you know, maybe you have, you know, different grandparents or different relatives. There are going to be millions of people all around the world missing. That's how you know the rapture has begun. So, really good question, excellent question. Okay, any questions about the post-millennial view? I know that's kind of, you know, something to wrap your head around. You got it? Okay. The next view about the millennium is "ah millennial." And when you put "a" in front of something, it basically means it doesn't really exist, it's not there. And so, the "ah millennial" view means there is no thousand-year period. And the kingdom of God started when Jesus rose from the dead. It was at that point that Jesus gained victory over Satan and the curse. And Jesus is reigning right now at the right hand of the Father from heaven. And after this present age is ended, Jesus will return, and he'll immediately usher the church into their eternal state after judging the wicked. Under this view, all prophecies were fulfilled in the ministry of Jesus. There's also no room for prophecies made to Israel in the "ah millennial" view. I know the post and the "ah millennial" kind of seem similar, but there are some differences in there, and I'll be honest, I don't totally comprehend them. So, like I said, it's very, very in-depth subject. Okay, anything on the millennium before I move on from the millennium? Okay. I'm going to talk about kind of this last section as we wrap things up tonight, about issues with prophecy. Why is prophecy an end times teaching? Why is it so hard to understand? Why is Revelation so tough? Why are the Old Testament prophecies, the things that Jesus said about the end times, why is it so hard? And I'm going to give you three reasons, okay? Reason number one is prophetic gaps, okay? Now, we're not talking about gaps in the prophets' teeth, okay? That they thought that they had to live for, you know, a spit gap. No, we're not talking about that, okay? Let me throw out kind of a picture here. How far are these mountain peaks? As you kind of look at this one at the top of the screen, we'll go to the next one, the next one, the next one, the next one over there. How far apart are they? And when you look at them, you know, it's really kind of hard to tell. Some of them kind of look like they're the same. That one might be the closest, but you know, we don't really know. We're going to have a little bit of fun. This is a picture, and I've selected four of these mountain peaks here. Number one, two, three, and four. And I want you to put the peaks in order from closest to farthest, okay? So if you think three is the closest, you'd be three. And then if you think it's two, you'd be two, and one, and four, you don't. So just take a little bit of time. I've blotted out the answers, that's like the black boxes there, so you can't see. And what do you think, in order, are the closest peaks, so from closest to farthest?
Two, one, three, four.
Two, four.
Two, one, four, three.
One, three.
Two, four, one.
Four, one, three.
Two, four.
Two, four.
Three.
Everyone's saying two for sure, I hear it, two, four, one, three. I think I heard two, one, four, three. Okay? Well, how many think it's two is the closest? How many think it's something other than two? Nobody's raising their hand. Some of you haven't raised your hand at all, okay? We got one person that doesn't think two is the closest, okay? What comes next? What do you think?
One.
One? How many think one comes next?
One and four.
How many think two comes, all right, we've already used two. How many think three comes next? No one. How many think four comes next? Some of you, okay? What's after that? One or what?
Two, I mean, one and four could be equal.
One and four could be equal, okay? Are you ready for the answer?
Yeah.
We're going to bow in prayer and we'll tell you next week. No. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. All right. Two is the closest at four miles. John Rock is four miles. The next closest is actually a tie between one and three. One and three are five miles. They're five miles away. And four is actually the farthest away at six miles. And when you look at these, you know, what if you thought there was only a mile in between each one? Because when you look at it, you know, two looks a whole lot closer than any of the others, but it's only one mile closer, it's the same distance that three and one are from four. And four actually looks the same as three and one or four. A lot of you thought four was closer, but it's actually the furthest one away. And so, as we look at these, we don't really realize how many miles, how much space there is in between, and that's kind of what prophecy is like. This is a diagram called the Mountain Peaks of Prophecy. And the prophets, when they gave a prophecy, it kind of looked like this. You see these different peaks, but you really don't know what goes where, what's first, second, third, fourth. And so, they're just giving the prophecy, and there, some talked about the birth of Christ. You know, Emmanuel, he's going to be born in Bethlehem. You've got, you've got the birth of Christ. Some prophesied about Calvary, about the cross. Some prophesied about the descent of the Holy Spirit and Pentecost. Some prophesied about the Antichrist and the coming Son of Righteousness, when Jesus steps on Mount Oliver and comes back. And then there's the millennium, and the millennium's a thousand years. And you learn it's a thousand years, only in the book of Revelation, the Old Testament, doesn't talk about it. So they really didn't see the millennial valley. They didn't see the valley of the church. We're valley girls and valley boys, you know? Got to be three years old, those who are my age are on getting now, yeah. And then, some prophesied about the new heavens and the new earth. And so, when the prophets are getting prophecy, they only see the peaks. They can't tell how much time is in between. And we're going to look at a number of these examples, and there's another thing. A lot of times, you kind of have some basic prophecy points. For example, we talked about the day of the Lord, the immediate, the eminent, and the ultimate. So in the prophets' old time, Joel, chapter 1, verse 112, that was the immediate day of the Lord. He says, "This is what's happened now, the locusts have come, it's decimated our country." But then he talked about an eminent day of the Lord. "We're going to go into captivity of Assyria." Other prophets talked later about going to capture captivity of Babylon, and then there's going to be restoration. Other prophets talked about the time of Christ, and then you've got the millennium, the new heavens, the new earth, the second coming. And really, the ultimate day of the Lord in Joel takes place right before the millennium does. And so, this is an example of how these days, the Lord, figure these prophetic points. We have another question from an online viewer.
We have conflict war that will be in the China, North Korea, and Iran area. Will it be before the rapture or after? Will it be during the tribulation?
So the question is, will the
Apocalypse.
Apocalypse of war of China and the northern Iraq, Iran area, will that be Before the rapture?
Or during the tribulation?
Or during the tribulation? I would like someone to write that question down. We're going to take one session and talk about that, and so that'll be more appropriate to get in there. So we're going to hold off on that, okay? All right. Let's take a look at some of these prophetic peaks. We see it in Isaiah, chapter 9, verses 6 and 7, where there's two comings of Christ. We talked about this, the first coming, the first advent, and the second coming. Verse 6 says, "For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given." That's the first coming of Christ. "And then the government will be upon his shoulder," and starting the second coming now. "He shall be called Wonderful Counselor, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. Of the increase of his government and peace there will be no end. Upon the throne of David, over his kingdom, to order it and establish it with judgment and justice, from that time forward, even forever, the zeal of the Lord of hosts will perform this." That's the second coming. And so, you can think, as Israel's reading this prophecy, not aware of the different peaks, they think it's all going to happen at the same time, and Messiah's going to come and set up the world government, and boom, it's all over. And because Jesus didn't do that, they rejected him. And so, but this is a great example of the prophetic gap. Another example is in Zechariah, chapter 9, verse 9 through 10. In verse 9, we see, "Rejoice greatly, O daughter of Zion! Shout, O daughter of Jerusalem, behold, your king is coming to you. He is just and having salvation, lowly and riding on a donkey, a coal, the foal of a donkey." What's that look like?
Easter.
Easter, the triumphal entry, yeah. Jesus came riding in, that's the first coming. But now look at verse 10. "I will cut off the chariot from Ephraim and the horse from Jerusalem; the battle-bow shall be cut off." This is actually when Rome invaded Israel in AD 70, about 40 years after Jesus died and rose from the dead. And so, there is a gap there, and then it says, "He shall speak peace to the nations; his dominions will be from sea to sea, and from the river to the ends of the earth." This is Christ's millennial reign. So there's a lot of times, there's multiple gaps in a prophecy. We see this in Luke, chapter 4, where Jesus fulfills part of Isaiah, chapter 61. Jesus comes to Nazareth, his home, or not his hometown, not where he was born, but the town where he had been brought up. "And as his custom was, he went into the synagogue on the Sabbath day, and he stood up to read. He was handed the book of the prophet Isaiah, and when he opened the book, he found the place where it was written." And this is cool, because you have to realize, the Jews, their Bible was not a book that you just, someone gave it to you, and it was open, and all there is Isaiah 61, okay? The scriptures in those days were written on scrolls. And think of scrolls being rolled up, kind of like in a newspaper, you know, that news roll, those long sheets of paper. And so, you would unroll them, and what they would do is, they would start a scroll, and they would read when they were done, that's where the scroll stopped. And so, when you came to the next church service, that's where you picked up and you're reading. And so, you're working through the books of the Bible. And on this day, that Jesus comes into the synagogue, they hand him the scroll at this place, and they say, "Read it." He opens it up, and this is what it says. "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he is anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He has sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and recovery of sight to the blind, to set at liberty those who are oppressed, to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord." Then he closed the book, and he gave it back to the attendant, and sat down, and the eyes of all who were in the synagogue were fixed on him, and he began to say to them, "Today, this scripture is fulfilled in your hearing." That sends goosebumps up and down my spine, to think that, of all the times they've been reading, and it just happened to stop in this scripture on that day that they gave to Jesus to read. And he says, "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, to set the captives free, to proclaim good news, to set, get people out of prison." And he says, "This scripture has been fulfilled," and he starts his ministry that day. Wow, that's powerful. Now, if you go to Isaiah 61, Jesus stopped at that point to close it and says, "This has been fulfilled," because of what we've done, is we highlighted in yellow what Jesus grabbed. "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, he's anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor, sent me to heal the broken-hearted, proclaim liberty to the captives, opening a prison for those who are bound, proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord." First coming, first advent, coming as a suffering servant, the savior of the world, okay? Now, and the day of vengeance, Jesus stopped right there. Why? Because the day of vengeance of our God, when he's coming to judge the earth, he's going to comfort all those who mourn, to console those who mourn in Zion, because Jerusalem is being attacked by the Antichrist, they're not free. "To give them beauty from ashes, the oil of joy for mourning, the garment of praise for the spirit of Evanus, that they may be called trees of righteousness, the planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified, and they will rebuild the old ruins, they'll raise up the former desolations, and repair the ruined cities, the desolations of many generations." This is the second coming, when Jesus comes and he restores Israel. That's why Jesus quit reading, because he knew that this was not the whole kitten caboodle. The Jews thought it was one advent, the Messiah's coming all at the same time. Jesus knew there's a first coming, there's a second coming, there's a prophetic gap in the prophecy that the prophet didn't see, and a lot of people didn't see. We can look at it now when we know. You know, it's like, those idiots, why did they know that, you know? You know, hindsight's 20/20, and it always helps to have the answers to the test, doesn't it? Always helps to have the answers to the test, doesn't it? Okay. There's a second issue with prophecy, and that's dual fulfillment, okay? Or you could even possibly say multiple fulfillment. Some prophecies are given, but they're fulfilled by two or more events that take place in history. There's only one prophecy, but different events fulfill it. And we'll take a look at some of these. In Isaiah, chapter seven, it's the Emmanuel prophecy. It says, therefore, the Lord of He goes to verse 14. "Therefore, the Lord himself will give you a sign. Behold, the virgin shall conceive and bear a son, and shall call his name Emmanuel." Now, at Christmas time, how often have you heard that verse? From you, Emmanuel, what does Emmanuel mean?
God with us.
God with us. That's what Emmanuel means. And so, when Jesus came, he wasn't given the name Emmanuel, but he was Emmanuel. He was God with us. But now, notice the following verses. And this refers to a child that's going to be born in the prophets' time that the king is going to know. It says, verse 15, "Curds and honey Emmanuel will eat; that he may know to refuse the evil and choose the good." So, this is not a newborn baby. He's grown up, he's been weaned. Now, he's eating honey and curds. And he's at the age where he can kind of tell what's right and wrong. Verse 16, "For before the child will know to refuse evil and choose good, the land that you dread will be forsaken by both her kings. The Lord, verse 17, will bring the king of Assyria upon you and your people and your father's house, days that have not come since the day that Ephraim departed from Judah." And this was given to a wicked king who was rebelling against God. And he was saying, "Hey, you're not repenting. And just so you know, that God wants you to know that he's in charge, that you're sinning, you're not getting right. There's going to be a child born somewhere in the palates that you're going to know. They're going to name him Emmanuel." Okay? That's good. Think of it, what kings were, who's Emmanuel? Who's Emmanuel? And before, after he's weaned, but before he can choose good and evil, he knows right from wrong, God's going to bring the king of Syria upon you, this nation that you have dreaded. It was a prophecy to the king to tell him what was happening. So, the Emmanuel prophecy was an immediate one, but it was also one that was in the future. We see this in Matthew, chapter one, verse 20 to 23. "While they thought about these things, the angel of the Lord appeared to them in a dream, saying, Joseph, son of David, don't be afraid to take it to bury your wife; for that which is conceived in her is of the Holy Spirit. She'll bring forth a son, and you shall call his name Jesus." Jesus actually means Jehovah saves. So, when you're saying, Jesus, you're saying, "God saves, Jehovah saves." That's what it means. And you're going to name that, because he will save, he is God, he will save his people from their sins. Verse 22, "All this was done, that it might be fulfilled, which was spoken by the Lord to the prophets, saying, Behold, the virgin shall be with child and bear a son, and they shall call his name Emmanuel," which is translated, "God with us." There are other prophecies that have multiple fulfillments. One deals with the Antichrist. We'll look at that one when we get to their advent. That's another reason prophecy is so difficult to understand, because you've got multiple or dual fulfillments. And then the last reason is because of incomplete revelation. Incomplete revelation, we have not been given all the answers to the test, okay? Well, we are limited in our knowledge. And we see this in a couple places. First, we see it in Revelation, chapter 10, verse 4. And it says, "When the seven thunders uttered their voices," this is John, the beloved, Jesus' best friend, writing this. "I was about to write, but I heard a voice from heaven saying, seal up the things with the seven thunders uttered, and do not write them." So, the revelation John had, we don't have all of it. We don't know how much was left out. So, we have incomplete revelation. And you know, have you ever tried to put together a jigsaw puzzle with some of the pieces missing? You know, that's horrible. And that's what it is. We don't have the complete picture. You know, imagine if the picture on the box was missing and you're trying to build a puzzle when you don't know what it all looks like. That's what's happened to us. It's not that a piece is missing, part of the picture is missing. We don't have a whole picture of the end time events. Another example is in Daniel, chapter 12, verse 4, and eight through nine. It says, "You, Daniel, shut up the words of the prophecy you've been given; seal the book until the time of the end; many shall run to and fro, and knowledge shall increase." Verse eight. Although, Daniel says, "Although I heard, I did not understand. Then I said, 'My Lord, what shall be the end of these things?'" Now, here, I'm getting this. If Daniel gets the direct download, and he says, "Okay, God, you've given it to me, but I don't understand it? Okay, how do I think Craig's going to get it? How do we think we're going to get it? We're no one else, we know it." I mean, the guy who got the direct download didn't get it. And he said, "Go your way, Daniel, for the words are closed up and sealed to the end of time." Meaning, you know, you don't understand. You haven't been given the complete picture. And it's sealed to the end of time. You're not going to know. We also see in Proverbs 25, verse 2, that it's the glory of God to conceal a matter. And it is the glory of kings to search out a matter. And you and I are kings and priests, and we're to be searching and studying. But there are some things God conceals, because, I don't know, and my son and I were just talking about this the other night, how, you know, there was things that I taught him when he was a kid. And it was like, yeah, they really didn't grab hold. But when I learned it for myself, then it really stuck. You know, and I think sometimes God just doesn't give us everything, because then we wouldn't work for it, it really wouldn't stick. God wants us to study. He wants us to seek. He wants us to search after him with all of his heart. If we seek after him with all of our heart, he will be found by us. So, as Stanley Horton, in the book Our Destiny, Bible teachings on the Last Things, says, "God has surprises ahead that are as much a part of his plan as things that have been revealed." As we go through the Bible, we see God is more interested in telling us about his goal for the present life than he is in giving us all the details of the future. He wants us to be trained in righteousness and thoroughly equipped for every good work, 2 Timothy 3:16 and 17. "The promises are given so we can participate in the divine nature and escape corruption in the world by evil desire," 2 Peter 1:4. And God is more concerned about how we live now than what we know about the future. And so, three considerations as we wrap things up tonight. Three things we need to consider as we look at end time events. The time when our Lord returns is not a deciding factor to our salvation. If it is pre-tribe, and the mid-tribe, and the post-tribers are wrong, and the ah-millennialists and the post-millennialists are wrong, it's not going to affect them going to heaven. If pre-tribe is wrong, it's not going to affect us going to heaven. The time of end time events does not affect our salvation. We don't have to believe the right thing or do the right thing. We just need to put our faith in Christ and repent of our sin, turn from our sin, and confess Jesus is our Lord, he's the leader of our life. And if that's what we're doing, we're living a life of submission to the leadership of Jesus Christ and trusting in him to get us to heaven. That's what saves us. So, it doesn't matter, our eternal destiny, what we think about eternity, okay? The next consideration is we should always be ready for the return of Christ at any moment. You know, for those who are mid or post-tribe, hey, if it is pre-tribe, you want to be ready. For us who are pre-tribe, we want to be ready, because he might come for us tonight. You know, oh, rich man, you don't realize, you tore down your barns and you built a bigger barn thinking, "I'm going to live forever." Tonight, your life is going to be a part of you. We don't know when it's our last night on planet Earth. We don't know if today was our last trip around the sun. So, we always have to be ready. We should always be ready for the return of Christ at any moment, or our death. And then the final consideration is we should always be ready to suffer for Christ at any time in human history. What if it's not a pre-tribe rapture? What if it's mid-tribe? We go through the first three and a half years. How many pre-tribe people are going to say, "Well, I didn't sign up for that. I signed up to get out of here." If that's the case, forget this. I'm not going to starve. I'm not going to, I'm going, I'm going to buy and sell. I'm going to take the mark of the beast. None?
Yeah, I've heard the discussion from a perspective of areas of the church that are under huge persecution and don't understand this whole tribulation. Do you think there is a
That's very true. There are many areas in the world, we are so blessed. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, repeat the question. The question was, or really was more a comment. There are many areas in the world where the church is under extreme persecution and say that they don't understand what we mean by a pre-tribe rapture, because they're already in tribulation. They're in persecution, they're in trial. So, that's a point there. And I'll just say, there are places, they go through horrible persecution, but what takes place in the tribulation doesn't even compare to what's happening right now. But if we go through the tribulation, are you ready and willing to go through it? If not, you spend each eternity in hell. There is nothing that people can do to you on earth that is worse than you losing your soul. And also, I believe the Church of America, we're not ready for persecution. I preached about this a couple Sundays ago, even if it was our first service back. If persecution comes, if Christianity is outlawed, are we ready? We need to be ready to suffer for Jesus at any time, now or in the end times, for him. We've got another question from an online viewer.
If Daniel sealed up the last book of Daniel till the end,
if Daniel sealed up the last book of Daniel till the end, does that mean post-tribe? Is it after the temple is rebuilt? We're going to talk about the prophecies in Daniel, a whole session for that. So, we'll get into that at that point, so.
That's great.
Yes.
Are the majority of the Jewish people's eyes shielded from seeing Christ as a savior now?
The question is, are the majority of Jewish people, are their eyes shielded from seeing Jesus as their savior now? You know, I'm not exactly sure going to answer that. I think there is a veil, Paul talks about, there is a veil over everyone's eyes who are not Christians. So, everyone who's not a Christian, there is a veil, the enemy blinds us, and it takes supernatural, that's why it's so important for us to pray and intercede for lost people, that God removes the veil from their eyes so they can see clearly. And so, that's the importance of intercessory prayer. So, everyone has a veil over their eyes. Do the Jews have it in a special way? I'm not sure. But I do think that during the tribulation, their first, many are going to buy in to the Antichrist being the Messiah, but then they're going to realize he's not. So... Okay. Those are the three considerations that we need to take into consideration as we're talking about the end times. Any questions?